So discombobulated.
Yeah.
It was not a good idea to drive west of the lake.
Yeah.
I'm going to stick to, so I mean.
Have the timer.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Molly, if you could help me with the roll call?
Uh, older person Henry here. Uh, older person Baron is excused, older person Valdi.
Here.
Other person Dean.
Here.
Other person Grimmer.
Here.
Other person Casson.
Here.
Other person Iker.
Here.
Great, thank you. Just a reminder, the Packer game is on tonight. I'm recording mine, so please no Packer talk of scores before we leave here. For those recording, and otherwise, let's keep it moving. All right, approval of the minutes of August 16th, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Citizens comments. Come on up, Mary.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Daniel, and I live here in Della Field at 309 Wisconsin Avenue. This evening, I'd like to talk about item 11 on your agenda. A city administrator. One parentheses, public informational meeting, bike and pedestrian facilities implamation plan, which is Wednesday, October 6th. I want to say thank you to the people who are on that commission. I attended all the meetings, no surprise, and they really did their due diligence. They looked at the park and rec plan, which is kind of what we would all like to see, a dream, something to go forward with, and they went one step farther and saw what could actually be. So you're going to be seeing a map that's got lines on it, squiggly whatever, that's the park and rec, and then what makes sense. They looked at land conditions, they identified the widths of paths, they used DOT standards, they really did their homework. So thanks to Dan Jocinski and his crew. It's very informative, and it gives us a platform here in Della Field to work from. Not that there's anything wrong with park and rec, but that was a dream, and you have to have dreams, and then you build foundations. So thank you to that group.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for pointing it out, Mary.
Would you like to be next? Come on up.
Uh, Lorraine Bonneywell at 761 Mill Street. I have a couple things here. First of all is for the Seven Seas. Now, it was on Facebook someone had on there that they weren't going to go through with it now, that there was, uh, that, um, Seven Seas was going to take it over again or do something with it. And, um, if this isn't true, if it's just a rumor, why don't they put in another restaurant in there, like a smaller one, like Denny's or something, that's a little lower cost and their menus, their food, and still keep the banquet where they could have small banquets like for parties and stuff through Denny's? And what if they put in some smaller restaurants or stands, like for hot dogs, tacos, or something like that, for around the lake area there, or around there, or further down or wherever, where the boaters could park their boat and then go and grab a bite to eat and still go back out on the lake and do their fishing or whatever, whatever they do, their, well, whatever, you know? And, um, because I know, um, when we were in Kentucky, there was, uh, we were out with the fishing guide, and it was like for an eight-hour day that we had with him. And we went out for like in the morning, then for lunchtime, we went at, got off the lake and went into the little restaurant and made our pit stop and ate, and then we went back on the lake and finished our fishing with him. And it was, it was nice, you know, and it was a little break in between. And, um, another thing is, um, what happened to the building that they were going, that was going up on Genesee Street and Main down here? And if that's not going up, would it be a big problem if you put, made that into that little lot, into like a parking lot? For then people could still come downtown, do their shopping, put their bags, packages, whatever, in the car, and then they could still go back and hit the restaurants? Because if you go down here at, well, in the evening or even on the weekends, this street and that down here, it's terrible, it's with, it's parked with all the parking, it's, you, you go, you go down, um, Mill Street, you can't see around it when the cars parked so close to that corner down here by the bridge. It's hard, you gotta kind of go out to stop, you know, just to look around, you know, to see if there's any cars coming down Genesee Street. It's a hazard out there. And, uh, that's, that's about it.
Okay. Well, great, well, thank you for sharing your comments.
Oh, I had one more, I missed.
Oh, go ahead.
And this is for you, for you.
Okay.
With the parking, the slips that you wanted to put in down by St. John's into St. John's Bay, what if you put them, if you made some, put some little restaurants or something around on the lake over by Seven Seas, what if you put some of those slips over there by, uh, Seven Seas? And then the people would still have spots, places to park their boats and go grab a bite to eat?
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Lorraine.
All right, any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. We'll move on to item six, the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Go ahead, the second. Kate Houseman, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to seven boards, committees, and commissions, licenses. I assume nothing. Planning Commission, Mr. Iker?
Yeah, we did have a meeting, and there was, um, two things of note. One was, um, there was a, um, request made by Fishbones to formalize what they've had kind of ad hoc for outdoor entertainment. So we, we set some, some times specific to, um, hours and days of the week for them to comply with and revisit it in a year to see how that's received by the community and the neighbors and that, because there was some back and forth about what was, what was appropriate, and so we'll see how that goes. The other item that is of note, other than the fact that there's people applying for sign updates and new businesses and stuff, so that's all good, but, um, part of that is also the boathouse, which is on the, the very northern, northwesternmost corner of our city in District 7, uh, just on the north side of Highway 16. Their business is doing spectacular, um, they wish they had more inventory to sell during this, this, this summer for boats and that, but, um, they are absorbing or trying to merge the properties with, um, what was, uh, Quaid and Dodge. They're taking over that piece of property and segregating their service department from their showroom and that, and so they're coming up, they, they gave a preliminary presentation about what their plans are for that, and so if anyone's interested in how that's going to look or be, they'll be coming back to the Plan Commission with those plans being final or, you know, at least presentation probably in our next meeting, end of this month. Aside from that, um, just check our agenda as far as what items are coming up when that agenda is released, um, end of next week.
Sounds good. Thank you for the update. Okay, we'll go to, uh, Lake Welfare.
Thank you very much. Uh, there's two substantial topics brought forward. The smaller of the two is, uh, the chairman, Mike Houseman, is in the early stages of working with Tom here to establish stormwater runoff into the lake. This research is a result of the sewer pack, um, documents that we've gotten recently indicating that there's significant silt as well as nitrogen levels being brought into the lake, and that's on the rise. The second topic and more consequential topic is the proposal of the, of dredging and the proposed project at the mouth of the Bark River as it enters the lake. Ultimately, a motion was passed by the committee to request that the common council include in next year's budget $185,000 to remove the sediment that's basically forming an island, uh, that's a few hundred feet in diameter. While some of this sedimentation is naturally occurring, much of it's, uh, also the result of human interaction farther up the Bark River. This dollar amount of 185,000 is based on the size and scope of past proposals, there's no proposals received on this yet, it's at the very beginning stages. But it was, uh, based on past proposals, reduced proportionally to this smaller area that's being addressed today. And just to be clear, this dredging is not adjacent to any property owners, it's in the lake at large. If the dredging does not occur, if you haven't seen what's going on, basically, it's going to continue going out into the lake, um, and continue to create this, this island kind of thing. So, uh, the Lake Welfare Committee feels that the lake is an asset, just like our roads and our parks, and needs to be maintained, as are our other assets. The committee vote was unanimous, uh, even from those not on the lake, they all agreed. Like the stormwater research, runoff research, it's a concern about the lake as a whole, which is one of the city's largest resources and assets, so it was pretty overwhelming.
Phil?
Yep.
This is from the Bark River, this silt?
Correct.
Is there any, was there any discussion on, obviously, that silt is going to keep coming year after year after year and eventually build up, was there any discussion on a silt fence? Or any way to?
Well, that, yes.
lessen, mitigate, attenuate the amount of silt in future years?
That was brought up, and the scope of that project would probably be significant enough that it probably, it was felt that that probably wouldn't go. The idea was.
Because of the cost?
Cost and the size of, yeah. At the, the very least, if this silt was removed, it would build up again, the, from, best as we can ascertain, probably every 10 years, the silt in this area would need to be removed. Again, it's not adjacent to any property owners, um, there's a lot of boats that get stuck up there, and if it continues out into the lake, um, other areas will just fill in too and create other navigational hazards, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Thank you, Phil.
Sure.
All right, we will move on to D, Park and Rec. Mr. Grimmer?
Park and Rec, August meeting canceled, but I do have an item for Tree Board. Our August Park and Rec meeting was canceled. But, um, Tree Board has a, an item for discussion and possible action. We did a review of the cost of, uh, community services, kind of review on trees and how much, um, we paid in the past, uh, we had developers pay, uh, in the past, and how much our costs are today. And so we did a retrospective, uh, look back and went back to 2014, and we found that the cost of trees, um, that we were buying and installing in 2014 is now 75% more expensive than that, than it was, um, seven or eight years ago. Because of that, um, uh, the Tree Board voted unanimously to recommend, um, an increase in the caliber inch of, um, from $150 to $250. Per my conversations with Tom, uh, text amendment, uh, to, uh, section 5262 of the code is required, um, to proceed with that, um, process. And so, any questions on that?
Just real quickly adding that a little bit, so that, that section of the code is the zoning code, and so as part of the zoning code, that needs to go through the Plan Commission, uh, they need to schedule and hold a, a public hearing, uh, they would then make a recommendation on, on the change, and then that recommendation will come back to the council.
Well, I'll weigh in one piece of that, because I saw this on the agenda, and I'm, I don't believe we've taken formal action on it, or, um, recently, but, um, there's been some discussion about what types of plants count toward the replenishing of, um, caliber inches for a developer. You know, certain types of shrubs are more robust and accomplish better things than certain kinds of trees, and so that would certainly weigh into some of the, um, discussion we'd have if, if we're looking at changing the code. I think we'd be looking at those types of species clarifications as well. I guess I don't want to get into it too much, because this will be a topic, if it hits Plan Commission, it'll, I'm sure we'll, it'll be appropriate to revisit all of that at the same time, so that.
Did Park and Rec talk about that at all?
Um, we didn't get as far as the species, although my recollection of the code, uh, is it identifies native Wisconsin species, but it is, obviously, it does not include invasives, um, or things like that. And, um, I'm wondering if, I mean, I think it has to be thought out, what is the, and the purpose might seem obvious, but, um, what if you have a grove full of buckthorn that is providing a benefit to a particular property, but under the ordinance, you, there's no, um, remediation for that?
Happens all the time.
Yeah.
And that, and, but, so some of the, some of the, where I was going to is that when you do actually, because I think the tree of the valued trees or the trees of, whatever the term is, is, is pretty clear.
Yes.
But what I'm suggesting is that we've had a couple of instances where the landscaping work that was executed didn't fit in and count certain things as caliber inches when they were actually really, really wonderful, um, additions to the property that accomplished the goal of the screening and stuff that we're trying to do, as well as the environmental things. So that, that'll weigh into it. It's not, it's not that you'd start getting penalized for getting rid of things that aren't on that valued species list, but it would be that you perhaps should get credit for plants that are reasonable for the environment that you're trying to get them into.
Because if you want to plant a row of arachnoides, you can't get any credit.
Yeah, you won't get credit for certain things that are.
But even though it may be the most appropriate thing for screening.
Right, right.
So I'd want, I think we, that would be the only thing that might make this not a slam dunk, is adding that to the discussion.
I'm happy to bring it back in the next agenda and add a little bit more, um.
Or you can just let the Planning Commission.
Yeah, say send it to Plan Commission and see what feedback.
It's up to you.
Um, well, would, would the passage of this ordinance suffice to meet the requirements to add that to the discussion then?
I think so.
So you're not passing an ordinance, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, just pass it.
You're initiating the process, is the vote you would, you would take.
Would this initiation of the process suffice to?
Yep.
Bring in those items that Alderman Iker?
Yeah, because this, this would then, um, get sent to Plan Commission for them to schedule the public hearing, and at that point?
Right.
They could, um, let our city planner know that they want to expand the topic of the, of the public hearing.
Great, then I'll make the motion to, um, initiate, uh, per section D2, um, increase the fee in lieu of tree replacement from 150 to 250 per caliber inch, as recommended by the Tree Board.
I'll second.
Just to be clear, we are looking for a motion, Tom?
Yep, a motion to initiate the process.
Got it. Any, uh, further discussion?
One thing I'd like to see added, I guess it's a Plan Commission discussion, is trees, uh, is, um, four inches and smaller are not considered in, in the removal process, and that's a tree that's been around for 15, 20 years. Just wondering if that's a standard, just to go with a four inch, or can that be reduced to three?
Certainly can be reduced, as far as whether it's a standard. I'm not familiar enough with other, um, ordinances and other communities to, to be able to answer that. I know at some point, it just becomes, um, difficult to inventory, once you get down to trees, um, certain sizes, um, and it's just a matter of establishing.
Okay.
Where that cutoff is.
I was just thinking, if we're putting in a maximum of two, I've had, putting in the maximum of a two-and-a-half inch tree, maybe going.
Two-and-a-half inches the minimum.
Right, that's my, but we'll take out anything over four inches, not consider anything less than four inches, so just trying to match those two things up somehow.
Three and three?
I like the idea.
Yeah.
If it's reasonable to plant it.
It's tough to get, um, three-inch trees lots of times.
Kind of thought so.
There's also an interesting discussion we had about, um, putting a four-inch tree, a newly planted four-inch tree in a location, and putting a two-inch tree in the location, see what they look like in 10 years, because a two-inch tree is often going to be better than a four-inch. So.
I just mean for removal purposes.
We're talking about removal, not planting.
I don't want to plant anything larger, just give credits for.
Sure, understood.
Okay.
I think those two, the two-pronged approach is, one, making sure the city is, uh, reimbursed on a commensurate level with our costs, and then two, making sure that, um, that everything, that, that this is revisited, looking at what's included, what's not included, from size to species.
It looks like we're on track to have a public hearing about tree removal and replacement. I think we'll get some feedback.
Should be a fun time. Should be fun.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, public works. Uh, Mr. Baron is not here. Tom, anything you wanted, uh, highlight?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll cover the bike and ped plan at, uh, at my update.
Okay. Great, then we'll move on to F, Delhart. Mr. Iker again?
Uh, Delhart has a meeting tomorrow, we're starting our budget process, and also, we're going to be, uh, getting a summary of work to date on our plant upgrade, which has gone spectacularly well.
Sounds good. Police Commission, I think you had a meeting.
There was a, an impromptu meeting called, real quickly. It was determined in the last two weeks that one of the two officers sworn in in June, right here, wasn't going to work out for the city. Subsequently, Chief Cale had requested the commission to allow him to start a new search process as quickly as possible. Any new hire, incidentally, would not actually begin street training until January, because the interview process would be taking so long. That new position would not actually even be, uh, on patrol independently until late winter, so, um, we're kind of down basically one and a half positions, that other half is because the officer that was shot at the Holiday Inn is still on restricted light duty, so, um, other than that, we're going to start with the interviewing process and see what happens from there.
Sounds good. All right, um, Library Board, Ms. Valdi, I was there, so I know you had one.
Yes, you were, and, uh, yeah, the Library Board, um, at last Tuesday, and, um, we are thrilled that our fall programming has officially started as of today. We're holding our first in-person fall storytimes. I know when my daughter was little, we lived for them. And it's the first time since 2019, mind you. You can join us outside as weather allows, uh, Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. You can contact the library for which storytime is right for your little one. The Library Board approved the purchase of a new self-check machine, uh, for the library. The other one that we have is over a decade old and housed outdated technology. The Library Board is, uh, also gave preliminary authorization to convert the whole library collection to using RFID technology. This will be a massive project for the library and will result in many efficiencies for both library patrons and for the staff. The amount of work and thought that has gone into the research for this stuff and the actual work is quite impressive. And finally, um, September is National Library Card Signup Month. Last month, uh, we had 72 patrons sign up for the new library card. In 2021, in total, we've had 563 so far. Your library card is your passport to everything available through the library, both physical and digital content. When is the last time you visited?
Sounds like a commercial.
I guarantee, I know, I'm pretty good. I used to do it for a living. I guarantee we can introduce you to something new. If you don't have a library card, head there and get one. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals, I assume not? All right, Promotion and Tourism, uh, Mr. Baron's not here, I did attend that, it was a very good meeting, it was well, um, a lot of good discussion. Tom, can you, I forget, I didn't write it down, I'm forgetting the numbers that they approved to put into the city's budget, do you remember that off the top of your head?
Yeah, Deb had told me that they approved, uh, a $30,000 contribution towards, um, debt service related to bike paths.
Which is more than we were able to have last year because of their financial challenges, and their numbers are, are looking really good, so, and, and they left it open that they could change that, but they're being very fiscally responsible and not wanting to make decisions until they have the actual hard numbers, but the parking lots have looked a lot fuller than they have in the past. We're anticipating some, uh, additional revenue. Okay, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer?
LCFR passed their 2022 operating and capital budget. As, um, Chief Fenig, you know, noted at our last common council meeting, um, and the following discussion, there was, um, a significant increase, um, in the operating budget, there ended up being a 4.5% increase, that'll be slightly higher for the city of Della Field, given our call volume and population, um, relative to other municipalities. That might change as well, given, um, health insurance, which was budgeted for 4%, which came in at higher, 7%?
About 7%.
There was, um, this was the first, uh, budget negotiation between the larger communities. There was a, uh, not a unanimous consensus, but a significant consensus to, um, utilize the, um, the, um, addendum, uh, the adjustment to the levy limit provided by a combined fire department, um, the CPI plus 2%, um, and communities, um, very much wanted that, and allow them to make that adjustment to their levy limit. There is included, um, an increase in an FTE, um, a, um, uh, some leadership training, some diversity and inclusion training, um, and adjustments were made to, uh, the fees associated with inspections. Any questions on the budget? We're also pulling forward, forward the ladder truck, as Chief Fenig noted, um, on our capital budget discussion last meeting. July numbers, I have July numbers, July recorded record revenue, um, for the combined, um, record revenue for fiscal 2021, most revenue that they, um, that we have, um, experienced. We should have, uh, August numbers, um, hopefully, uh, in a couple of weeks. Obviously, with record revenue comes record calls, uh, they had, uh, that, that big storm that happened, um, a few weeks ago, a month or so ago, had, uh, over 40 calls associated with it, and, uh, folks work in 16 hours of 40 calls throughout the area, so it was, um, significant utilization of your, uh, of your fire department. Next meeting is Thursday, this Thursday.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, unfinished business. Number eight, attenuation providing virtual access to common council and Planning Commission meeting through Zoom. You got that, Tom?
Yeah, in a couple of past meetings, we've discussed this topic. The council asked for us to look into drafting a proposed ordinance that would, um, specifically allow for the circumstances during which we can use, uh, virtual meetings and remote access. Alderman Iker, shortly after the last meeting, um, recommended that I take a look at the Village of Bayside ordinance, and the ordinance that you see before you is, um, is that ordinance, largely, um, just, um, modified for our purposes. I did ask Molly to review this, and, um, today she pointed out a concern about the 24-hour and 48-hour notice periods before the meetings, and suggested that we consider changing that to, rather than before the meetings, uh, 24 and 48 hours before the, um, notice deadline for noticing the meetings, uh, so that we can, uh, properly get Zoom access onto the agenda and whatnot. Any feedback regarding the proposed ordinance?
I also took a look at another community or two, and, um, pretty comparable. The only thing I noticed with the other communities was, uh, in ours, in the one you've created, it says, um, in a, in exceptional circumstances. says, in exceptional circumstances, as determined by the mayor, there's just, it's indicated instead of mayor, just said presiding officer or city administrator, should there, just allowing more flexibility. That was the only significant difference, and that's not a huge difference, but I think it's good.
And if you look at how we wrote this, we actually had to put the same similar wording into our code two different places, just based on how our code is laid out. One place applies to our committees, boards, and commissions, and in that one, we reference the chairperson, and then there's one specific to the common council that references the mayor.
I mean, I'll comment that the thing that appealed to me about some of these ordinances and this one in particular is, I know we had a brief discussion trying to determine, well, what would allowable circumstances be? What would be the geography? What would be the, and I don't think, in most cases, the person that's going to be most familiar with the situations is going to be the, you know, the chair of Park and Rec, the chair of Public Works, the mayor running this meeting, you know, plan commission, et cetera, is going to be the people that are actually organizing those meetings and having the communications about the quorum and that. So I thought laying the discretion on their shoulders, they're the ones elected by the people in some cases and appointed by their own committee members and all the other ones. So that seemed to be appropriate to me, as opposed to trying to create a litany of reasons that could possibly be cause for someone not be in attendance, so. I like giving discretion to the people that are supposed to be using it appropriately. Seems simpler.
I guess I have one question, the line in, let's see, what section is that? Section two dash one nine one D, if you go down to the next page, it says, if a person, council member wants to attend remotely, the mayor decides whether to grant the request at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. The mayor's determination shall be final, which I get on a certain level, but I'm just wondering on what basis would one deny, you know? I'm just curious, if a council member, does it require, or is it a notice thing, or is it? I'm just curious.
Well, the way this is written, it would get denied if it's, you're missing the meeting out of out of your own convenience, you're traveling, you're on vacation, things like that. It'll only get approved if it was considered an emergency or extenuating circumstances.
Which I totally get, and maybe we want to just put that in, like, you know, missing a meeting or asking attending attendance for conveniences would not be a reason to miss a meeting, something, I don't know, just reasons.
I think it says that already, Jackie, honestly.
Oh, okay.
Anybody interpreting it?
Maybe I just missed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already in there, it's fine, because I, there just was.
So it says, virtual meetings, remote attendance are not authorized solely for convenience or due to vacation, travel, or seasonal relocation.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Okay, there it is. Yeah, agreed.
Guess you'll like it then.
Question answered. Thank you.
Okay, so I, let's see, this was, this wasn't for action or anything, so you took, taken the feedback and went and maybe make Molly's changes and bring it back?
Yeah, we'll make Molly's changes. We'll have Attorney Hammers review it and see if he has any comments, and then bring it back for action in the next meeting. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you for your work.
Good deal.
Sounds good. Okay, number nine, Mayor's Report. I'm gonna, I attended the deer management meeting, but I will defer to Ms. Henry to give us an update on the deer management.
Yeah, there's, there was a number of things we discussed at the deer management meeting, including locations of the tree stands and the program for the nuisance tags and really increasing awareness and marketing of that. So we're working on getting out information to people who have registered in the past so that we can try to get them registered again this year, and better tracking for keeping track of when those tags are actually used, because in the past, they go out, but we don't always find out if they're actually, we're getting the deer. So we're trying to figure out a way of increasing our ability to track what, how many deer are actually being taken. So we're working on that, and we're going to be meeting pretty regularly through the winter, so.
You've actually met twice already.
We've met twice already, and we're going to continue to meet very regularly for going forward, so.
Yeah, I'll just add, some very good discussions, a lot of the workload, the pass was kind of centered on one person, but the committee, commission really spread it out amongst a bunch of individuals, so it's a real, I'd say, team effort, this go-around, and I think we'll get some better results than we did last year. I was very, very impressed by all the members that participated in that. Okay, then we'll move on to eight A, discussion possible action on the following items, accept the resignation of Joe Brown from the deer management committee.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Trans. Approve, opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, all right. Eight, number two, Mayor's Appointment, Appointing Gene Olson, citizen member. His application actually said District Six, but he's actually from District Four as a new member of the management committee.
Aye, so move.
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, then I just had three brief comments I wanted to make. There was a Hendrix meeting with staff concerning seven oh five Genesee Street, which you brought up today in citizens' comments, and we were very encouraged that excavation process should begin sooner rather than later. So I think that's good news for everyone in the city. Second thing I wanted to mention is that the seatments had reached out to us on their new development in District Seven across from St. John, St. Joan of Arcs, and they've sold out ninety percent of their lots.
Really?
And it couldn't have gone better, it's gone to a combination of developers and a number of private individuals, so the mix is really nice for them. So they're ecstatic, very complimentary of process the city put them through, and they participated in, and they couldn't be more excited. And now that that development's happening as quickly and successfully, they'll probably be moving on to phase two or phase three sooner than maybe we would have thought before.
That's great news.
Then the last thing is, it was mentioned previously about the Bike and Pedestrian Facilities Implementation Plan, and then I'm referencing the Economic Development Land Use Focus Group, which you participated in, Jackie. I've set up meetings with various neighborhood mayors or village presidents just to, in some cases, it's either on their border, they could possibly connect in sometime in the future, or, you know, if a land use has changed near their border, just want to make them aware of the discussions that are going on with the city. So I finished one of those, I've got three more to go, but just got very good positive comments from the first one, so I'm looking forward to the other ones. And then we'll be meeting on the twenty-eighth to discuss that on our joint meeting with the planning commission, the council, and then it'll proceed from there, based on everybody's input. That's all I had. So we'll move on to ten, New Businesses, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding a Resolution for the Forestry Grant Application. Is that you, Tom?
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward. We are looking to submit an application for an urban forestry grant. It is for activities that are routinely included in our budget anyways. Last year, we were successful in receiving a grant for a little over seventeen thousand dollars. The grant primarily helps to reduce the usage of the tree fund for our annual tree planting program, and it also goes to cover a small amount of Public Works labor, supplies, and equipment that's in the general fund budget. And so we are looking at asking the council to approve the authorizing resolution that is required to be included as part of the application.
I'll so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Tom, you'd said that it was a reduced amount from last, compared to last year, and that's because we had fewer tree planting activities. Is there a particular, are there particular thresholds that they go by, or is it just a dollar per dollar ratio amount, where if we just tick it up a little bit, we?
It's a fifty percent grant funding, so whatever our eligible expenses are, they fund up to fifty percent.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. We've moved on to B, Approval of the Vouchers Payable Report for Reporting Dates of eight seventeen twenty-one to nine twenty twenty-one in the amounts of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents per accounts payable, and two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and nineteen cents for payroll.
I move to approve the voucher list.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Number eleven, Report of City Officials, City Administrator.
Yeah, we talked about the Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan put together by the Public Works Committee, and I just wanted to publicly announce that there will be a public informational meeting regarding that plan at the next regularly scheduled Public Works Committee meeting, that is October sixth, six thirty in the evening in this room. And also just to let you know, at the next council meeting on October fourth, so a couple days before that meeting, either Jim Barron or Dan Jashinsky will attend that council meeting and give the council a brief overview of what was accomplished with the plan. The next one is, we heard from DOT about an update about a resurfacing project that they're looking to do on I-94 from Highway eighty-three east to the interchange with Wisconsin Highway sixteen. Right now, that is planned for construction in year 2026, but there's a possibility it could be moved up as far as potentially 2023 if some funding becomes available. The city of Delafield is really on the outskirts of the project. It will include resurfacing of the park and ride lot at the ice skating rink. It will include consideration of possible improvements of the westbound off-ramp at Highway eighty-three, and then it will include resurfacing of I-94 from Highway eighty-three to the east. Any questions on that?
Is there ever any discussion, realizing it's the next exit out, but is there any discussion ever that you've heard of for Highway C for the bridge? I'm sure it's, you can see that.
We actually have a request into the DOT asking for what their plans are for that bridge. We're asking in relation to the potential development of the southeast quadrant of that, and what types of traffic improvements we should be requiring of any development that happens there. So we're hoping to get some feedback on that soon.
Thanks.
Would they be looking at doing all of this, like, all of it at once kind of a thing, or would it be in phases?
That's one project that they're talking about, yeah.
So they'd be doing sixteen and ninety-four at the same time?
No, so it's, it's just I-94 from eighty-three to sixteen.
Oh, okay, okay, never mind.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, and then lastly, I did pass out a, the budget schedule for this year, the 2022 budget schedule, and the three meetings to be, to take note of on there are Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, we'll be having our budget workshop meeting, and then Monday, November first, will be the public hearing on the budget, and then Monday, November fifteenth is scheduled for final action on the budget. Any other questions?
The day after Halloween.
Any Packer games on those dates?
A lot of dumb questions. Although, we're going to get done before eight o'clock, so maybe it'll make.
Those take a lot longer.
Yeah.
Okay, City Clerk?
I don't know anything.
Sounds good. City Treasurer, July twenty-one, twenty, twenty treasurer's report. Okay, D, Council Request for Future Agenda Items. Seeing none, let me know if you come up with something between now and the next meeting. Number twelve, Correspondence Over Free to the 2021 Amendment for the Comprehensive Development Plan for Waukesha County. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at seven forty-four.
Efficient.
Go pack. Go.